With Governor Baker's order of March 2020 to the code, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? Please indicate by doing something. No? The first item, the first item is our list of meeting minutes. March 9th, 2020.
Mr. Chair, I had an opportunity to review these minutes. I think Mrs. Glover said she did as well, and I saw.
I would endorse approving the March 9th, May 11th, May 26th, August 17th, and November 16th minutes.
The, I would, I would second that, although I had a question on the July 13th, which isn't even here, but was in my packet. Did you get July 13th?
No.
Oh, okay. It's for some other reason, because it has the wrong date on the top and the wrong.
I do have July 13th.
Yeah. Well, July 13th, and then the bottom it says July 20th, right? Am I misleading, misreading? I didn't see it, but it sounds different here. And I thought, well, maybe this is. But they really didn't want a set of minutes that I would like to use. Okay. Okay. Let me look at this. Is that on?
Okay. So what were the, John, the March 9th?
9th, 11th, 26th of May, 17th of August, and November 16th, 2020.
Then we'll look at the July 1.
I'm, I seconded it, so I think that that, I have a couple of little spelling things I'm just going to say, but there's nothing, nothing.
There's been a motion made to second it to approve them, all in favor. Aye. Next item on the agenda, next item on the agenda is the dispatch, talk about the dispatch decision. I sent you a list of dispatch documents that you should have. If you don't, I can leave my copies and give them to Pam, you can get a copy. And they are, one is a various cost savings and projection sheets, draft of the IMA Hampden-Wilbraham based on the East Long Meadow Hampden version, a letter from Wilbraham regarding their costs and expenditures from September 24th, 2020, a sample Westcom contract from April 2020, a Westcom Hampden transition plan from April 2020, regulations and requirements for certified telecommunications in Massachusetts, copies of other IMAs for comparison, the Rutland Regional Group, Holbrook, Templeton, Phillipsden, Shirley Air, the Hampden Lobby Traffic Report, July 6th through July 26th, 2020, a call analysis by time of day and day of week for 2019, that's for the whole year, dispatch option sheet prepared by a town administrator on September 8th, 2020, job descriptions for the Hampden, Wilbraham, and Westcom dispatchers, copy of the citizens petition. I asked if you viewed the two citizens committee videos, a map of the regional consolidation dispatch, selectmen Glover's notes from her Westcom conversation, an email from Nathan DeLonge, who's the Wilbraham IT person, to Nick Broth, the Wilbraham DA, TA regarding connectivity, a draft IMA Hampden-Wilbraham based on the Shirley Air version, copy of notes from joint meeting of board chairs in the town administrator sent 11/21/20, dispatch option sheet prepared by the town administrator, August 30th, 2020, an email from selectmen down for regarding conversation with the Wilbraham board chair from October 1st, 2020, notes prepared by selectmen down for regarding discussion with the Wilbraham TA, the Hampden town administrator, and the Wilbraham board chair from 11/220, and an email from police chief to selectmen down for regarding cell monitoring. So if you got all those, that's part of our discussion. I was, and then, as you know, we've discussed, we've scheduled a forum, Zoom forum, on December 8th, from, at 7 o'clock, and Bob, I believe you posted that already?
It's posted, and the Zoom code is, I believe, out there as well.
Okay. My hope is that that'd be run an hour and a half or two, and that we would present all the documents we have, and people could ask questions, and we could answer them. But there's got to be some rules how we do this. We can't have everyone, you know, talking at the same time. So I'm thinking that if we could look at, it's a way to set this up so we can do it in some kind of coordinated manner. Perhaps for the citizens committee, they could have one spokesman, they could channel their questions to that spokesperson, and they could ask the question, we could respond directly to them, or they could send written questions in, in pre-high email, you know, over the next week or so, in the next, what is it, seven days?
We could divide the time up into pre-submitted.
Pre-submitted questions, open form, and that type of thing to get.
I got copies, I can put those on the whiteboard.
Okay. So we could do that.
You could also do the screen, you could do the screen sharing with some of the documents you have. If Bob scans them in, we can put them up on the Zoom screen for screen sharing for any questions.
Well, except, except there are a little, your, your information is a little more detailed. I mean, the whole list you could put, but the specific documents are more detailed, so they wouldn't be able to absorb them off the screen quickly enough to respond.
Contracts and stuff, they probably.
Yeah, they couldn't. No, there's too much information.
But they could ask specifics about, for instance, you know, governance or something like that, we could answer those questions.
Yeah.
So the, the, I guess what I'm looking for, I guess what we want to do this evening is we can do one or two things, or three things, or five things, try to narrow it down. We can defer any decision till after the forum. We can make a decision that we're going to proceed. Can the board of selectmen provide the documents you currently have that you listed on? Yes, you can make a freedom of information request for that, we can provide those. So we, and do we want to take a vote? Do we just want to defer till next week, till after the, the forum? Or do we want to take an affirmative vote that we're going to proceed with consolidation of some type, or?
I don't know that, I don't, I don't know that a vote is required, Don. I mean, you made a point that we would make a decision, then in response to people's concerns, let's have a forum. So our decision is still basically as part of the budget process. I think between us, we need to fish or cut bait by the end of December. We're going to have this opportunity to get citizens' input, understand it, and then come back with a decision. So I think, as the chair said, if we can put this to bed in our minds by the end of December, I think we've done our job.
I, I would agree, and I think that the forum will give us what, what the public is feeling about it. I'm wondering if we couldn't make some kind of a folder online with the documents? Can we, rather than having individual requests for information, which could be several, if we just put them all online, and anybody who wanted to view them could view them?
Well, it is over 200 pages.
Well, is that impossible?
Electrons are free.
Electron, it's quick.
Electrons are free.
Yeah.
On a paper.
Yeah.
I would endorse, though, make sure, make sure they're up there in PDF format.
Right, so that they can't be changed, and, and, just for your information, or the audience's information.
I mean, the Russians are very interested.
I'm sure they are.
So the, so the decision is a non-decision, as we're very good at that. And, and we'll, we'll defer any decision till after the forum, and we'll collect additional information, but we need to get this done before budget time, because it's only fair to follow a bunch of people, the people.
Also, the December 21st session that has been rescheduled with the town Wilbraham.
To what? Do we not have another date, or?
No, the 21st.
Oh, it is the 21st. I get it.
I would just caution, I would just ask indulgence of, of when we post these documents, that, for the math majors out there, all right? It may be a couple of hundred bucks off, maybe even a thousand bucks off in the end. So just, you know, use round numbers, this is their new math, just use round numbers.
Guess to me, give a estimate.
Don't worry about the fractions or anything else.
I noticed that, I noticed that we have a small difference in what the future budget would be in fiscal 22 and 23. I started with 447, which is the current budget of the dispatch operation, and then added 2.5% to 22, 2.5, 23, but we'll, we'll.
Well, I started with 447, too, also, and, and I did not, I, I 2.5 the pay, the retirement, the, you know, insurance, but, you know, that could be more, right? It could be less, it could be more, probably more. And I didn't, I didn't 2.5 things like the lease and that stuff, because I figured that would be a stat, that's a static number. So that's why that's probably a little bit different in there.
There's a little bit of difference probably because of, one of us may not have included the cost, the annual cost of the software that we use over there.
Right.
I was informed today that that's 14,000, not 7,000, that there's been a price increase. I said.
That's gouging.
That's what the police chief told me today. I think he's on here, maybe he can explain that. He was.
All right, so we're going to, again, prep up for, we'll prep up for the 8th, get the documents online, accept questions ahead of time. Perhaps we'll get some of these questions before next week's meeting, and so we can, you know, charge Bob or yourself with getting answers ready for them as well.
The, the other thing is, I would, I would, as well as the, as the figures, I would be generous with my understanding of the wording, and, because these were done for internal use, so, you know, they're, they're not the best.
Grammar.
Grammar. So I'd like you to be understanding of that, and I think this plan looks like it's, it's going to work out well. So if you have questions, just bring them, on the 8th.
One more chat message.
Review the date and time.
Date and time is the December 8th, 7:00 PM. All right?
Yeah.
All right, next item on the agenda is capital planning, appointment of new members of capital planning committee.
Before we did that, I, you, you know what I am about a, about organization, but I did type up a proposal for how committees should work, so that we had some structure to them, and we could continue them and so forth. So I typed this up, we do not have to, I'm going to give you each a copy. I thought you could review this and see if you like this approach to, to the establishment of committees. It goes through what the mission of the committee is, what the organization of the committee is, what kind of reporting we want from that committee, what kind of a budget they are going to have, and who the members will be. We can certainly go forward with members tonight, because we have said that's what we're going to do, but if you like this approach, you could write all over this, make changes to it, whatever you want to do.
Can I interrupt you?
Yep.
What Westcom question was ignored?
The question above says, is it off the table?
No.
No.
No, it's not.
My, my question was, you, Donald, if I may speak, you, you opened up, and all the documents you referenced were related to an intermunicipal agreement. I didn't hear anything about a, the, or the regional agreement, so I just wondered if that meant that.
No, no, excuse me, Jim. No, I did say sample of the Westcom contract for April 2020, and the Westcom Hampden transition plan from April 2020.
Okay, I missed that, I heard all intermunicipal stuff.
Yeah, and also, they're.
No, you clarified it, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
And Jim, and also the budgeting stuff, when you see it, we'll have the Westcom numbers in there, too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so back to capital planning. If, if this is something you want to review, and say, yes, we want to use it, or no, we don't want to use it, and say, yes, we want to use it, or no, we don't want to use it, or this is how I would revise it, or whatever, I think that, for, to get the, to get the, I got four, I think, do I have to give you four? Yeah. I think that to get the best work out of committees, you have to ask, give them a specific task, and give them specific requirements. And I think this is what this does, but again, it's open to revision.
So obviously, you know, there's been some back and forth on the capital planning committee, which I know Jim is online, and Jim, I think, was part of installing that back in 2001, Jim, roughly around then. It was pretty well detailed then, and it's been implemented over the years by various members, usually advisory, selectmen, et cetera. Many notes, many minutes, talking about how it's been carried forward, a little hiccup in the past couple of years because of the town administrator change, et cetera. It's nice to have thoughts about how to form committee, it's, it's odd that other committees that, for instance, you would involve with, you had no thoughts about coming up with a mission statement or how to form them.
I've thought about that all along, and, and, and would have done it, but I thought this was a bigger endeavor, and, and might be, if we like it, if we don't like this, then, you know, we don't have to use it, but the others were more minor, I thought, but maybe not.
No, I was just surprised at some of your comments online, I felt they were pretty, you know, obviously something I wish you had shared in the meeting, rather than writing them like that. I think we, I'd like to thank the people that have participated in this committee over the years. I do want to share that Don Collins has asked to step off the committee for personal reasons. I'd like to thank Don for his many years of service, both on that committee, and we all know Don from many years on planning as well. And I understand that Bob does have a couple of people that are interested.
Yes, and also the accountant has said to me just a few days ago that he doesn't think he can do it.
Yeah.
So we have two to replace.
And I did chat with him about that, he's happy to provide information to us, but he'd like not to be more heavily involved, but he is always there as ex officio for his background, knowledge, for money, et cetera. Same thing, I feel Dick Mattel was treasurer, is extremely valuable for understanding the budgeting needs of the town.
The, the two individuals who have expressed an interest were Lisa Sternberg and Donna Hatch.
Did they send an email to Bob or something like that? Okay.
With the, with, on this sheet, which, again, we may or may not accept, I put a seven-member committee, I thought it was five now, but I wasn't sure, so I put seven, seven, because that's the regional number that's in my head. And I said that each member would be for a three-year term, and they would serve on a rotating basis, so that somebody would go off every year, and somebody new would go on. So, you know, if, if there were five that remained from the past, and those other two would be seven, I suppose.
How does this differ from the policy the board adopted before with Jim Smith and Austin and Dwayne?
I couldn't find that.
It's in the town report.
I, I couldn't find it in the town report, in the recent town report?
No, I mean, this is.
Oh, in 20, go back to 20, 20. I realize that, I realize that.
So it's not like we're reinventing the wheel here, it's been.
But I, I, from the minutes that I, the meetings that I have gone of the capital planning, I didn't get a sense of the, the structure, or the, the effectiveness of it. And those are the same comments that came at the Wilbraham, at the meeting that was just held, not the Wilbraham meeting, but the meeting that was just held, a couple of people said that also. So I thought that if you bring more structure to the, to the decision-making process, there's more likelihood that, like, one of the things that I put in here was that, the budget, and we would have to go through the advisory committee, I realize that, and this may not come to be, but that they would have a budget, a 2% of the general fund would be allocated towards, towards this, so that they have some funding to do some minor kinds of projects, perhaps, if they want to do, everything doesn't have to be a big bond, you know? So this is not recreating a wheel, it is just, I looked at several towns and what they're doing, and what kind of format they use, and I tried to come up with something that seemed to represent us, and yet took the best of what I could find from them. So if we don't want to use it, then that's your choice, but if we do, I think it will enhance our operation. So we can, we can do appointments, and then just wait till next week and do this as.
Well, I think we had left the meeting in a pretty good state, that Bob, you're going to take over scheduling meetings, we're going to go on a bi-weekly basis, I believe. So, and he would send out the notice, again, in the past, as in the past, this is a, what's the word, Don, ad hoc committee, only had one member of the board that so reported to board, much like the ambulance committee, much like, et cetera, that didn't need posting, because it wasn't a decision-making committee, it was information gathering, less than a forum present to report back. If that changes, I mean, that's the will of the board, but that's the way it's been with some of these subcommittees in the past, I would certainly endorse the board adding to these two members. I appreciate Donna for her help with both solar, correct, Bob?
Yes.
And ambulance as well.
Especially the ambulance.
As well. And Lisa's always been an enthusiastic participant in town things. I have many great conversations with Carl, we run into each other at the Isle of Big Y at least once a week.
I do, too. That's where I use the.
Weirdest thing, it's serious.
Did you make a motion?
Which I noticed you were going the wrong way with the arrows, but that's fine.
Hey, 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 that's not on video, is it?
You made a motion, so I'm going to do a second.
Appoint Donna.
Donna and Lisa Sternberg.
Correct.
And I second it.
All in favor?
Aye. And then we'll, we'll leave this on the agenda for next week?
Yes.
Okay, capital planning, just to see if people like it or what don't really want to.
Ambulance contract.
Passing over this for another, we need one more week, there were some issues that popped up this afternoon.
All right, just a brief planning discussion for the advisory committee meeting next week. What's the general format?
Yeah, basically, it's a go around the table type of thing, where we laid out our goals, advisory lays out their goals, and we'll discuss that with them next week. Are they looking for level of service, level budget? We, yes, again, as I talked about before, the zero-based thing, it's a great concept, it's almost impossible to implement, especially with a mostly volunteer crew here, that say, I need you to carry down and start from scratch, we're not pros. I think guidance from our board and the advisory as to which way we want to go, level service or level budget, which consistently means a loss of service, because expenses don't go down. If you're going to keep a level budget, something's got to go. I would say that, the fact is, we've done a pretty good job, I think, man, managing the numbers. To say that you should come in with a presentation for level service, I don't think is wrong. And then we would go around the table, and different boards would talk about issues that they may have going forward, that the, we as a board need to be aware of. And they bring them forth as a warrant article, they may say, much like Conservation did a few years back, the state is overloading with regulations, we can't get by in 10 hours, we need 20, be aware, and these are things we need to know, that's a tremendous impact to the overall budget. So it's a sharing of information around. The question's going to be, Mr. Chair, do we still want to go with our plan of having this roundtable at the cafeteria? I know we did go red, I don't know if we're going to stay red. It's my personal opinion, I'd like to do it if possible, because there's no takeaway from being able to have everybody in the room speaking to each other, even though it's 50 feet away. And the going back and forth with the Zoom thing with 40 people makes it very hard.
I'm comfortable with it being there.
I think we can spread around 45 people easily.
And if somebody isn't comfortable coming, somebody from their committee can come and share the information with them at a later date.
Or we'll try to do a Zoom thing, a Zoom participant as well.
Right, right, right. Can we do both the level service and the level budget?
We could present both, we've done that in the past.
Right, so you say, this is what, my level budget, this is what my level service would be, and then if I had to go level budget, this is what I would.
We've actually asked the three budgets in the past, where we said, give us level service, level budget, and a 2.5, because what would you absolutely need? Typically, library might come back with some things, look, we got to get back to two hours, we got to get these, this children's service back on, we have to get this back on. Senior center, another example of, look, we need to start growing, we can't just stay static.
And as part of that project, to the process, do they project what's going to happen down the road for us a little bit, or do they just do that one year?
No, they do, they do that one year.
I see, I see coming is going to be.
It can be both ways. Sometimes it's one year, sometimes it's part of a multi-year growth plan for them. Obviously, with different departments, where we have expansion.
What do we do with, what do we do with the independently elected boards, like the Parks and Rec, and Cemetery Commission, and Planning Board?
Well, they'll be at the meeting as well, they're, since we're a joint meeting with advisory, someone will hear what they're talking about. It's good for us to know about it.
What happens with their budgets? They submit their budgets directly to the advisory?
Right, so that's why we have a goal between, we both agree that, hey, we'd like to see these, and everybody's marching to the same drummer.
So, just to be clear, we do want various boards and commissions to come in on this meeting on the 7th, or do we wait until the 14th?
No, the 7th. The 7th is our meeting, joined me with advisory, and the 14th is everybody.
14th, everybody, yeah.
Everybody. Hopefully, at that point, we'll have the handouts, and that's something I would think that you, Pam, will work with Kristen on getting the handouts ready to, after next week, budget chiefs to hand up, and then Pam will be able to stand up and say, hey, the town report, it better be done. Nobody's leaving here until you write it.
Were we looking for someone for the town report to help with?
Contacted you.
Good. Two's better than you had last year.
I don't know who they are, but I moved to a point.
Unusual sound.
I guess it scares me personally.
High priority, wouldn't look.
All right, so we don't, we got the plan for the advisory committee.
Well, how does the board feel? I mean, you know, let's ask for, I think we're doing the same thing, we're looking for level service, and make a case for either, basically. You can't, you can't short the public, global people of the thing, but just let them know you're not going to be able to.
Right, right, exactly. And we don't have to do the 2.5, so we can just do the 2. We can do level and, and level services and level budget, and not do the 2.5.
That's a good, that's a good thing to discuss with advisory next week.
Yeah.
They might talk about that in terms of, we talked before about keeping the levying limit proper.
Right.
You keep the levying limit, but then you use free cash to depress the tax number, but you still have the levying capacity, right?
Okay.
All right. That'd be the 14th, the 14th, right? New business, fire department photographer.
Pat Farrows on the call, the chief sent this over, he's asking for your approval on page 2, page 2, there's an explanation from the chief.
On the back, it's on the back? On the bottom.
So there's no cost increase, they had not passed in the budget? Okay.
Pat, do you have any comment about it? Unmute Pat.
Hello, good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, yeah, no comment. Basically, it's just another position to the, the team, you know, there's so many events that we do, and so many things that happen, it will just, you know, create some historic documents as we move forward, and just kind of help, help with our social media presence, and, or, you know, getting out information to the public when needed.
Is there also, Pat, during different events, when, during different events, when it's important to have a photographic record in case the marshal comes back, et cetera?
Um, I think we're going to lean towards a way, you know, we don't want to put that individual, you know, that, that becomes kind of a police matter when you, you know, start taking pictures, even if you were to take a picture with your phone. So we don't, we're not going to use that for any sort of arson investigation, it's mainly just for, you know, documenting, you know, the good, the good the fire department does, and, you know, again, putting information out to the public of what we're doing daily.
Well, if this isn't for, for actual incidents, could you use, like, an on-call fireman to, that just had photography skills, or, or a camera, or a phone? I mean.
Yeah, you could. We're, you know, we're, we're pretty short in our roster right now, so I don't, I don't have anyone to, to do that duty. That's kind of where we wanted a, a non-firefighter civilian to kind of play that role.
And it's about, it's on an on-call basis. And it's on, it's on an on-call basis, right? It's not like a.
Yeah, so I think, I don't know if you have the, um, the SOP we wrote up, so it'd be on an on-call, uh, so like a, a major incident, he could get called out for, you know, based on his availability as well. A major incident or any, you know, again, just helping us capture some moments and getting it out to the media, road closures, et cetera.
This is a, this is a position that would not require any, any insurance, any.
And no supplies and, and no cost to your budget, to the fire department budget?
Nope, nope. He would use his own camera. And we would have our, I think we would purchase a, a memory card, you know, for 20 bucks or so. And everything else will be digital through a cloud storage service. And, um, no other foreseeable expenses.
I'm, I'm glad you, I'm glad you said a memory card because I almost regressed and said, who's going to develop these pictures?
That's what I was going to say, what about the film?
Yeah. That was painful.
Let the fire chief take care of.
We have to make a motion to approve it, though?
I don't think so. They can do anything, I mean.
Okay.
It's a good idea.
Go forward. Make it so. The session with the Wilbraham Board of Selectmen, that's separate December 21st. That was a misunderstanding, so that's, that's not going, that's not going to happen this evening. And let's, let's slip down to the town administrator's report.
I, I've updated it, so I gave you a fresh copy, the reflection thing that happened since I wrote this earlier. We did receive CARES Act funds totaling $163,000. These funds are expected to serve the town from July 1 until the end of this calendar year. There's been no discussion as to whether or not the governor will extend the time period for using these funds, but he is having a major presentation over Zoom this week. And I've already submitted that question, that are you going to allow these funds to, especially the ones since, I'm sure many towns have not expended all the funds, can we continue to use them after the end of the calendar year?
What, what number are we at right now? What number are we at right now? And how does that play into the school question we had?
Okay.
I mean, would we want to get them in there if it's a calendar, end of calendar year concern?
I, I have some comment there on that a little further along. We have received $51,000. We received $51,000 already for reimbursements for expenses from March until June 30th. This is the new tranche of money. And I, I don't know that we're going to be able to use all of this. The system that the state has established is that they give you the money, and if you can't justify the expenditures, then you have to give the money back. So, that's where we are. Cliff should have this in the bank as of today. So, this is a, a different system than we're, we're accustomed to. Capital planning met on November the 24th. Meeting's now scheduled every two weeks. And this meeting of the board chairs that took place last week to talk about consolidation and also to discuss a, an IMA proposal, an intermunicipal agreement proposal between the towns of Wilbraham and Hampden. Ambulance contract still needs some work. The DUI fraud, that continues. I had a discussion with the treasurer today. Apparently, the state has not figured out a way to stop it. It's happening across the state. There's these, this group who are entering the names of town employees into the system and asking for unemployment compensation. And they've apparently figured out a way that they can collect the checks if, in fact, the DUI approves compensation. So, I'm checking it regularly, and if I see a, a case that's obviously a fraud, I, I let them know. Actually, they put our town treasurer on there. I told him today that I know that he's not trying to draw the town, although I'm not always right. So, he's, obviously, he's not.
And it's happening in other areas, not just.
He's not attempting to do that. They just, they picked the wrong person who put on that list. It is happening in other towns, yes. Here's a, something I want you to have a look at, not for this week, but for later. This is a new community compact opportunity. I thought about sidewalk on Allen Street, whatever. It's, you know, a significant amount of money is available. Now, to answer John's question about the CARES Act funding, Wilbraham, as you know, has requested additional information about reimbursement under the CARES Act. And this is what I received just recently, quote, "The Treasury has clarified, in order to be eligible use, in order to be an eligible use of funds, recipients must receive the, quote, 'beneficial use of goods delivered and in-use or services rendered by December the 30th.'" And so what they're wondering is, let's say, the HVAC filters, which apparently they're not going to be able to have those installed until after the beginning of the year. And so if this beneficial use clause is enforced, then they, the school will not be able to use CARES Act money for this purpose.
Well, can they take possession of the filters and just not have the installation done at the back? I mean, if it's in their possession.
It could be, yeah. I mean, the question then becomes, what's beneficial use, you know? So, that's what they're trying to work through prior to the decision to go out and expend the money. Okay, the municipal vulnerability project is underway. They're focusing on the watershed on north, no, at the east Main Street, where you have the inflow of Big Brook and East Brook into the Scenic River and where there's been flooding in the past. And, and lastly, today, Action Ambulance offered CISD training, critical incident stress debriefing for those police and fire officers who were involved in the fatal motor, motor vehicle accident this morning. Department heads meeting this week, and then you see the, the other items that are coming up.
All?
Yeah, I, I heard that, I thought, what's that mean?
That concludes.
Do we have any selectmen reports?
Just briefly, in conversation with him and Housing Authority, they really, and I think I reported on this before, they really don't have much interest in a sidewalk for the senior center. Their interest is primarily just with crossing the street to get the Garys safely. And they'd like to really have the town focus on that, rather than, in, in their eyes, really a sidewalk to somewhere they're really not going to use.
That makes sense.
Would that, would that community compact then be something to look at? In order to have a, just a crosswalk, you'd probably have to have a yellow blinking light, otherwise cars coming at 40 miles an hour.
Right.
That could be very dangerous.
Right, right. Or like the one in some that you push the button and, and the light goes on, you know, and everybody's.
All right, anything else? We have an exec, we have an executive session scheduled and for, to discuss the Hampden Wilbraham Regional School District lawsuit. The question is, Judge Howarth would like to have some input on, into it. The question is, do we want to hear him in open meeting, or can he be allowed into the executive session?
Bob, I, I know this came up, did Ed Bakula have a feeling either way? Did you have a chance to ask him?
I did not.
Okay.
He's on the call, though, right now.
I see Chrissy, I didn't see Ed.
I thought I saw, I know I saw Ed. It was Chrissy. Ed was, there he is. Ed?
Hello. Hello.
Yes, hello. Judge, Judge Howarth would like to make some comments either in, in, in the executive session, and we didn't know if that was all right with you, or we should have, give the comments an open session, and then adjourn to executive session.
If the comments are to provide some legal advice, they'd be welcome.
An executive session?
As long as they're providing legal advice, but if it's just somebody wants to sit in, no.
He has something to say.
He has, he has something to say. I'm, I'm not sure it's legal advice, I think it's an opinion, number one. And number two, I think if, it does set a precedent that if someone can come in and request to go into executive session because they have a position on an issue, for us to let that go, go is inappropriate for regular people, you know, for just, for just anybody. I don't think, I think the Judge Howarth was saying that his, he had expertise that would allow him to speak to this issue. And I would point out that he was a member of the district court, which does not deal with cases like the Superior Court does, which are major cases, but rather deals with traffic incidents or minor, some, some legal issues, but certainly not of this, this magnitude. And I don't think that he has a background in educational law. So, I wonder what purpose he would serve, other than be able to express his opinion on the lawsuit, which any person in the public could do and have the right to do if he does.
So, your suggest. Ed?
If I may, you know, I've known Judge Howarth a long time, and although his career was in the district court as a judge, prior to that, he had many Superior Court cases, and I, I would value his legal opinions. But if, if he's not here to offer legal advice, his participation would likely invalidate the executive session.
We're going to ask. Should we spend the rest of the night talking about what we just had? Bob, why are you here? Although, I'm not saying, it might be if I can.
That's right.
I can't keep it full.
Not even a spoonful.
The judge is here, and Phil Schneider is going to explain.
Well, Ed's got a question about your participation. If you're offering legal advice or just an opinion?
Oh, it's, it's, it's based on my legal advice, based on my experience.
Could you hear him, Ed? Here, okay, give the mic, here.
It's based, Ed, how are you?
Use, use the mic.
Hello, Judge.
How you doing? You still practicing, huh?
Trying.
Yeah, but my opinion is based on my experience on the bench and, and this case, of which I've dealt with cases similar to that, and the effect on it right now and what the position is.
Yeah, I value your opinion, Judge, and I'd love to hear it, but if, if you are providing some legal advice, I'm for it, and let's hear it. But if this is, but it, and it shouldn't be an executive session, but if you're just here to offer your lay opinions, then that's something that, you know, I'd be happy to talk to you about, but it shouldn't be part of an executive session.
No, it's my opinion based on my legal experience with these type of cases. That's where it should go right now.
With legal advice?
Yeah. It's free, too. It's up to you guys, you know?
Well, I think as Ed said, if it's legal advice.
Well, I, you know, I've told you three times that it's based on my experiences as a judge, dealing with cases like that, that's legal.
Well, I understand that. We just don't want to put the executive session in question that we, you know, and Mary Ellen brought up a good point, you know, if you're coming in as, say, an expert witness, then you should be in it. If that's the word.
Well, I think I have an expertise, I haven't been, you know, retired judge. I think there's a certain expertise in and of itself. But that's up to you people, you know?
Well, I, hello, yes. I think that you certainly have ears as a judge. I think that coming into the executive session to give your opinion on this case, when you really don't have the research that the attorney of Bakula has, nor have had, rather, have had lengthy discussions with any members here, as far as I know, on the issue, I don't think adds much to the, to the executive session. And I'm concerned that if we allow you into executive session, we also have to allow into executive session some lawyer that would come forward and say, well, I have experience in this, that, or the other thing, and I'd like to give my, my expertise.
Okay, it's up to the chairman. Mr. Chairman, you want me here, fine. If you don't want me here, fine. If you don't want me here to explain it, there's newspapers out there I plan to talk to because I'm fed up with this. So, your call.
I am going to defer and not have you come to the executive session. Thank you. Yes, Phil Schneider participated in prior executive sessions because he's the liaison for the lawsuit.
And he's been designated as such, so he's bound by the same confidentiality.
Confidentiality, right, right. And I want just to make very clear that my decision has nothing to do with the judge's expertise in law or his years of service to the Commonwealth. I just don't feel it's appropriate at this time to have someone else come in. And we'll await Mr. Schneider's arrival.
In the meantime. Open session, and I'll set up the next.
Okay, we're going to close.
I have one thing, I'm sorry. There's a list interview of used car dealers.
I say.
I'll make a motion to endorse the renewal of the licenses for the used car list as provided by administrative assistant, and any, the list will be in the minutes as typed.
All in favor?
Subject to all, subject to all.
Secretary, all in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, such executive session without a return to open session. John Fled, aye.
Donald Downport, aye.